We're about to start the meeting, just gonna let everybody know. So it is, uh, the time now is 5:45. Uh, I'd like to get the selectmen meeting started here for Monday, August 18th, 2025. Uh, just a reminder, the meeting has been posted in accordance with the provisions of Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20B, and is being recorded and will be posted on Area 58 Community Access Channel. The Board reasonably anticipates the following matters will be discussed and/or voted on at this meeting, and agenda items may be taken out of order for time management considerations. And if everybody wouldn't mind, we always start the same with a stand and a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, and as you'll see here on your agenda, a small agenda tonight, although an important agenda. We have three items to go over and discuss. We'll start with the 5:45 agenda item, which is the open meeting law complaint against the Board of Selectmen from one Mr. Patrick Higgins. So, just a little bit of history on this one. Uh, that on August 8th, 2025, we received an open meeting law complaint from Patrick Higgins of Northport, Alabama, relative to the July 22nd, 2025 Board of Selectmen meeting. So, uh, let's see here, I have the paperwork right here, pardon me one sec. Pam, did I have a paper copy or is it just the?
It's just, it's on, uh, it's on, uh, in the meeting packet, on your computer.
Okay.
Yeah, it should be in the very first one, right after the lead, you had to just slide up slowly.
Yeah, it just says it's on page two.
It's right below the, um...
Right here, here it is, here it is, here it is, yep, sorry guys. No, sorry. All right, uh, according to the allegation, the chair, which is myself, did not announce that the meeting was being recorded as required by Section 20F of the Open Meeting Law, and it gives a link to where the video can be viewed online on YouTube. And then this says, uh, the chairman must make sure that he announces that all meetings are being recorded as required by Section 20F when the meetings are being recorded. Um, so this was me, involved me, I apologize. Uh, I've chaired a bunch of meetings, uh, and no other excuses to say it slipped. So, uh, the one thing that we did do, uh, and I will give our interim town administrator a lot of credit, is Bob Fennessey came up with a new, you hear me now at the beginning of the meetings, uh, he's written it all out, so there will be no more confusion. So, um, kudos to Bob for putting that together. So that's kind of what happens when you get an open meeting law violation. They're looking for some sort of remedy, some sort of way that you, uh, as a board, are gonna try to change things. So that's how we approached it, so, um, that is, that is what the town is going to do. So if you want, I can entertain a motion, um, that the interim town administrator respond to Mr. Higgins', um, uh, filing, and that the Attorney General's office pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter 30A, and will send a copy of our new agenda form that Bob created, along with a response to Mr. Higgins' and the Attorney General's office. And again, my apologies guys, uh, completely an oversight on my part.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimous, 3-0. All right, well, we got a little bit of time here, that's a little bit of the issue. We have, uh, Steve scheduled to come in at 6 o'clock. Um, so what we can do, if you guys are okay, we'll take a quick bathroom break instead of just sitting here staring at each other. We'll do a bathroom break to re-uh, join this meeting at around 6 o'clock, uh, when Steve comes in to discuss the next agenda meeting. Thank you. All right, well, the time is just before 6 o'clock, so we're gonna go back in session here for the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, August 18th. Uh, we're jumping down to the next agenda item, which on our agenda here... Sorry, we switched over to a new agenda, so it's throwing me a little bit. So it's discussion with Steve Hayward about asphalt procurement bid. So basically, Steve, we had a meeting, uh, last week where we were talking about the, um, the bid that we put out for the asphalt. And one of the questions brought to us by, um, a person in the audience was, if any of your contracts have any NTEs, a not to exceed number, um, for that contract. So the idea being is, you sign an agreement with that company, but yourself, the town, and the company both agree that this contract will not exceed a certain amount of money. Uh, I was wondering if maybe it was more to the effect of, you're just kind of holding that company as like our retainer, as our guise, and then as we have contracts and projects down the road, that's where the, the financials come into play? But I didn't know if you could clear that up for us?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So basically, the, um, Hayward Rehab, that's the contract I've had for one year, but we have a three-year contract with them, so it's every year we re...
You rehab?
Not negotiate, but if there's big, uh, if the money goes up a lot, then they, we have to go in front of you guys and say, it went up so much, but this year it didn't.
Gotcha.
On the Hayward Rehab.
Gotcha.
Uh, the one that I just did with All States Construction, that one... Oh, that's what I meant to say, this one is 30,000 to 50,000 square yards, we pay 752. If we go over the 50,000 square yards, we pay 565 per ton.
Okay.
Only per square yard.
Okay, so we kind of got, I think, in the last meeting, what the prices were set at, but I guess the question, uh, that was being raised was, is there a, a final number associated with, I guess, all your projects for the length of that contract that you, that you set as a not to exceed?
Not for each year, I just, I have to keep track of how much I have in each budget, like for Chapter 90 money, I have to put in, that's what I'm gonna be doing with, um, what is it, Hayward Street?
Okay.
So I have to, we already put it in to Chapter 90 with District 5. Tell, I had to do, do you wanna take a look at it?
If you'd like, I, I mean, I...
So basically, that's gonna be 418,000 dollars.
Okay, and that's, that's for Hayward Street?
That's a complete overhaul.
Okay.
Is that sidewalks or just street?
No, no sidewalks.
Just the street?
Just, they're gonna do a full depth reclamation and then base coat.
Oh, there, all the way down, oh.
Yeah, yeah, always gonna do anything with that, road is so bad, it's the same as River.
Yeah, is that, is that the whole length of Hayward?
Yeah. Except for the bridge, because now the bridge is...
Giving us trouble? When it rains, it pours, huh?
Yeah.
So that number for whatever it was, 418, that takes into account the $300,000, $300,000 budget you have, plus the Chapter 90 of...
No, that's, that's gonna be just Chapter 90.
Just Chapter, so this comes out of the 555 or whatever?
Yeah, this year it went up to...
594 or something?
Yeah, five or four something.
So this comes right out of that?
Yeah, well, I had to put in a, a request for it. Before we can do the job, they have to, okay.
Okay.
And then the other job I'll be doing with the money that I get from the town at, um, town meeting, that one, I'm gonna be doing the, this, the contract you guys are gonna hopefully sign.
Okay.
So I can, 'cause I got lucky that I can even do this, because one of the other towns, like, pulled out.
Pulled out of it.
So they need to, they wanted to fill the spots, so I had a couple streets I wanted to do and...
Okay, so you, so you have projects already in mind for, for this contract that we're gonna sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I might actually have one more street, because I'm way under what they want.
Okay.
But it's a filling, so they're gonna do it anyway. But if I can get him to do Cairo Street too, then I'll do Cairo also.
Great.
So...
They do, they do great work.
Oh, yeah.
One of the best companies around.
Oh, really?
Taylor Edwards, oh, yeah.
Oh, great.
They call them, they call them Too Late Edwards, because once they start at 7, and they'll go...
They'll go until it's done.
And Mr. Edwards, he's like 80, how old is he?
Yeah, he's, he's up there.
83, 84, still on the excavation?
Oh, wow.
Unbelievable.
That's great. Oh, wow, good to hear. Awesome, all right, well, any other questions for the board before we entertain signing the contract?
Just, no, it all makes sense to me, but did we answer the question that was originally asked?
Should I go over?
Yes, can you go over the number, basically?
If I don't have good record keeping, but, not with the Chapter 90 money, I couldn't, because like I said, that's gotta go up and get approved.
Sure.
But the other one, that's up to me to keep track of how much money I have in the account.
Okay. And normally, Steve, when you do contracts, do you ever have a not to exceed amount listed on, on contracts with companies like this?
Just like I said, that, all I've ever done is the, um, what is it? If I go through 30 to 50, I've never had it exceed that, that price, because they don't want us to spend money that we don't have, so it's a checking balance, basically.
Okay.
So there's not really a set number, but the contract that we agree to and sign theoretically is within the budget of the parameters that we've responded to.
Right, if, like, if I know exactly what I'm gonna do?
Right.
I can't go with a certain company, because it's gotta go with the bid.
Yep.
But some of the companies will come around, they'll give me an estimate, and then they'll say, this is what it's gonna cost you.
Okay, makes sense.
Around.
You're right.
But this time, like I said, it was a last minute thing with this other company, so it was just like, throw the numbers out there, I'm just using the same numbers I have for the, um, recycling, for the hot-in-place, and it's gonna be the same amount of square yards, because it's the same streets. So they'll come in, they'll do the hot-in-place, and then the All States, the one that you guys are gonna sign, that's, they're just gonna put the, um, rubber, the chip sale, I'll talk about it. So it's the same amount of...
All right, we're good? Everybody good? Audience is good? Speak now for a roll of your piece? Cool, all right, well, I would entertain a motion to approve a three-year contract to All States Construction for the rubberized asphalt as outlined in the full package.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Thanks, Steve.
Steve, thank you for coming in.
Just saying, I'll be able to put it out so that people on these streets know, 'cause, uh, I don't like to put this stuff out there ahead, because usually if something happens, then people get more pissed off when they find out you can't do it. So I wait, until I have a definite date.
Any time, any ballpark timelines yet?
Idiopath, Chemican, Country Club, and Fairway is, they're hoping to stop next Monday.
Excellent, yes, we're wondering if you needed this thing signed timely, because you had things...
Yeah, this one I did.
Good.
And the other one with Taylor Edwards, that's gonna be, they're hoping it's another filling, so it's gonna be, um, hopefully the mid to late September.
Great.
What are they, a week, maybe, a week on that road?
On Hayward?
Yeah.
It could be about a week and a half. It depends on how many situations.
They're, they're the best, I'm telling you.
Yeah.
You cannot be wound down, okay with anyone says.
Yeah.
Seen their work.
They do solid work, good to hear.
They've done all the work since I've been, and they, they get the bid every time.
Great, awesome, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Appreciate it, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna move down to the next, uh, item on our agenda here, and it's essentially, uh, to do some interviews for our town administrator position and discussion. So you'll see here, we have this gentleman to my left, Mr. Bernie Lynch. He is with Community Paradigm. Uh, and how this happens a lot of times in communities is, when a town administrator leaves, a community will bring in a consulting firm to help with the search process, to help vet, uh, the candidates. Uh, basically to help Halifax find as quality a candidate as we can to fill our position. Um, we created a screening committee of seven folks that looked at various resumes and various folks, um, and then whittled it all down. So Bernie, I don't wanna take away too much of your, too much of your thunder here, so I'll put Bernie on the spot. Bernie, wanna give us the, the overview of how this process worked and how things are going here in Halifax?
Sure, let me, let me start by, uh, I think it's always, it's always important, I think, for, uh, everyone to understand sort of the market. Whenever you're doing some hiring for any type of position, particularly something like this, it's important to understand what's going on in the marketplace right now. And, uh, for some years now, uh, the market for, uh, town administrators, town managers, uh, has become very, very competitive in terms of, uh, the supply of people for these positions is not as great as the demand for the position. So it's very much a seller's market, if you will. Uh, the, um, in the, sort of as, as evidence of that, um, you know, we do, we've done 125 of these searches now over the last nine years, nine, nine and a half years. Um, that's sort of a testimony to the fact that it has, there's been such a turnover. Uh, roughly 80%, maybe a little bit higher, of the communities in Massachusetts have changed their administrators and their managers over the last five or so years. Uh, there's been that type of turnover. Much of it has been generational, uh, the baby boomers are, I think, there's, I don't think there's a baby boomer left in the, um, municipal manager world right now here in Massachusetts. Uh, and in the, uh, uh, but beyond that, there's a churning that has happened, as those people have retired, uh, people in the smaller communities have moved up into those, some of those larger communities, uh, and so there's a, the whole process of sort of backfilling beyond that. The other issue that's come up over the last number of years, it seems, is, um, more geographical in nature, um, that people aren't necessarily willing to relocate or to travel long distances for jobs. So very much it's geared towards, it's a competitive market, uh, and then people are staying within a, a certain area. So in the case of Halifax, you're looking at basically, um, maybe, uh, the canal, uh, up, uh, you know, maybe up, uh, up as far as, um, you know, not quite probably, probably up around, uh, the Cohasset area, and then, uh, maybe out, uh, to 495. And you look in that area, you say, okay, what's, what's happening in that area? And a number of those positions over the last several years have already, have recently been filled, so those people aren't necessarily ready to move. Um, you know, you start to look for assistant managers to move into a number of these positions, uh, and there aren't that many assistants in this particular region of the state that are willing or interested in moving, or one, there's not as many, and two, those that are in place aren't necessarily willing to move. So, uh, it does make for a somewhat competitive, um, marketplace for us. Uh, in the case of Halifax, uh, when we were engaged, and we did the last search, uh, when Cody was, was hired.
Yep.
Uh, and, um, uh, you know, we, we put this out, we, we utilized the Massachusetts Municipal Association, um, uh, as our, as our main source for advertising the position. Uh, but beyond that, what we like to think of as particularly, um, uh, unique or beneficial of using Community Paradigm is that, um, you know, we have a very, um, robust database of potential candidates based upon all of the work that we've done. Um, we're the most active municipal, or have been the most active municipal recruiting firm out there. Uh, and so we know many of these candidates that are out there. Uh, we have about 400 people in that database that we make positions available to. Uh, we know that they're out there, we know that they might be looking, or we know that they're in the field, and they might know people that might be looking. And, uh, so we, we circulate the information about the position out that way. We're also very active in the, um, MMA Suffolk University Local Government Certificate Program. Um, it's a graduate program, uh, run through MMA with Suffolk University, with its intentions being the creation of the next generation of municipal managers. Um, I was the program coordinator. Uh, John Petron, who's with Community Paradigm, is currently the program coordinator, and we're both teaching the program. Uh, so we know a number of the people that are out there that might be looking for positions of this nature. So we draw upon that to sort of go out and, um, build up that candidate pool or the outreach to the candidate pool. And we, you know, as, as, as one of the communities that we work with described it, uh, you know, unlike a case where we simply are out there trying to trap a candidate, we actually go out and hunt candidates and find them.
Okay?
So we don't just lay the trap, we actually go out and hunt them.
I like it.
And, um, so that's what we did, uh, in this case, as we do in, in all of ours. So we did, beyond just sort of circulating the information, we did direct calling and outreach. We recruited, that's what recruiting firms do.
Okay.
In the case of Halifax, um, we read out and we, we obtained 20 people that were interested in this position. Um, and I can't get, you know, without being, I have to be somewhat careful here that we, there is a confidentiality aspect to this, um, that, um, so I don't wanna give away any information that identifies people, but of the 20 people that we had, um, interested in the people, in the position, three of our candidates withdrew. Uh, one obtained, arguably two obtained another position, uh, and, uh, another one, um, withdrew, uh, because she was looking at a, a number of other positions where she was a finalist, larger communities, uh, substantially more in compensation, uh, and more what she believed to be, um, the type of community she wanted to be working in. Um, larger, more, um, commercial tax base, uh, more growth type of projects like that that she wanted to focus in on. We had, um, five people, uh, six, excuse me, six people, uh, of the remaining 17 that were non-municipal. They didn't have any municipal experience at all. Um, um, you know, they, they may have been extremely well qualified, but the committee deemed them to be lacking in really an understanding of what has to take place in municipal government. The rules, the expectations of municipal government are different than, um, many private sector, uh, positions. Uh, you know, oftentimes we find that private sector people who want to get into this field can be successful if they have done work as a volunteer, uh, or as some type of, uh, have, have participated in municipal government at some level, but it is vastly different. Um, then we had, um, another, uh, six people that were municipal government people, uh, that the committee, um, looked at, that, um, were somewhat very, um, specific in their, uh, portfolio of responsibilities. Um, one was a director of elections. In that type of position, there's a limit on what they, the committee determined it was a limit on what they could really get their hands around in terms of what goes on in municipal government. Just, that's just an example. Several of them were members of Board of Selectmen or something of that sort, but it was, it was, the committee determined that they weren't, uh, they weren't the highest quality candidates that they were looking for. Uh, we did have some former town administrators that applied, um, but they had some baggage, shall we say, and the, the committee reviewed that and determined that, uh, and they, they interviewed and they talked to some people, but, um, they determined that that really wasn't what they were looking for. Uh, they started with five, um, semifinalists out of the, the group that was there, uh, and two of those people were, two of the ones that, that did withdraw. Uh, they interviewed three, uh, and they felt that these two that you're gonna be meeting with tonight had the background, had the, uh, interpersonal skills, the style that was appropriate for Halifax and the types of issues that you, um, are looking for. So they conducted those interviews over the course of an evening. Uh, and to come to that decision, um, they covered all of the topics that we're gonna be covering tonight, um, and, uh, they went off on a few different directions, as I'm sure you're gonna go off on a few different directions, because the process is set up that way to give the candidates, uh, some basic questions, and then have you, uh, during the interview process, drill down into some of those responses. Uh, we did, um, once we had the finalists in place, we did contact them, uh, we got references from them, uh, we'd done some preliminary background work even before they walked in the door, but then we did more in-depth background that we provided to you in the form of that reference report that hopefully gives you a flavor of the types of projects that these people have worked on and the style they have. Um, and we can, we can talk about that perhaps in more detail later, but, um, that's, that's what we do. And then we did Cory checks of all these people, of the two candidates you have, uh, and they cleared those Cory checks.
Good.
Uh, so they're, they've got that background work already done. Um, and that's where we are.
Excellent.
I think, I'm happy to answer questions if this, if anyone has any...
I've been through this, uh, not unfortunately, but I've been through it a couple times, so I'm more familiar with the process.
Board, rest of the board, okay?
Okay.
Excellent, all right, okay.
Without further ado, do we want to start? Our first candidate, Blair Crane, is here.
Blair, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Jonathan Seeling.
Tom, very nice to meet you.
Tom Pratt.
Tom, nice to meet you, that was good.
Thanks for coming in, Blair.
Good to see you.
Good to see you once again. Hi, how are you, Blair Crane?
Nice to meet you.
You get the hot seat, Blair.
The hot seat, right?
You passed the first test, you knew the seat that you were in.
We'll put the giant spotlight on you right now.
Absolutely, pull the mic closer here.
Blair, the, the way we're, we're gonna do this tonight is, uh, you know, we have a number of different, you probably heard it, I was just describing, we have a number of topics that we wanted to talk to you about, and, um, I'm going to kick off, uh, each topic with a question or two, uh, and then the, uh, board members will follow up with, uh, to get clarity, uh, or to dig a little bit deeper into your responses, okay? So I'm gonna start with the first one, um, which is the basic one that, you know, obviously you'll probably, might feel like you're repeating yourself a little bit to me and to a couple of the members of the screening committee that are here. Uh, by the way, I didn't mention this with the, to the board, but I do wanna, uh, extend my appreciation. You provided me with an excellent screening committee. They came well-prepared and they, uh, with a lot of interest in, in, you know, doing the right thing and doing the work that was necessary. Um, so, but anyway, um, tell us about yourself from the standpoint mostly of, why do you wanna be the town administrator in Halifax? Uh, this will be your first time as a town administrator. So I'm interested in hearing why you wanna do it, what do you think your challenge is going to be entering into that area?
All right, well, to start off with, thank you very much for the opportunity to interview here. I, I do really appreciate it, and I do consider it to be an opportunity. Um, I guess I will start with my background, uh, as a public works director, um, and being in municipal government for some number of years now, that, um, I feel as though my skillset and the experiences that I have have really aligned with what this job entails. Um, my current position, which I've had, uh, for over six years now, uh, goes back to essentially touching every single department in town in one way or another, where it's police and fire, health and safety, um, numerous, uh, you know, with the town planners, zoning board of appeals, planning board, the public, uh, council, dealing with, uh, you know, whether it's procurement, uh, a number of administrative issues that, that come up. The Department of Public Works really does have an impact on all of those. And, uh, you know, we always say that, uh, you know, if, if a building isn't on fire or, or someone isn't being robbed, it's a Department of Public Works issue. It's, uh, you know, those, we, we have a little bit, whether it's water in sewer or trash, roads, trees, uh, all of those things not only come with a responsibility with the public, but they also come with a fiscal responsibility, they come with a managerial responsibility, um, and one person can't do all of that alone. So it, there are leadership qualities there, just all of those combined have led me down this path to where I think I'm ready for the next step in that evolution. Halifax, I will admit, I didn't know a lot about Halifax. Uh, I'm, I live in Foxborough, uh, and Norfolk, uh, where I'm the, uh, public works directors in the other direction. Uh, over the past month and a half, since this is all began, I have spent, uh, quite a bit of time in Halifax. I was curious to see what growth, what new growth was like, uh, what was, you know, going around, on around town. Um, on top of that, uh, certainly, uh, I know more about jet skis than I did, uh, from, uh, from all of that research, and, uh, and as well as, uh, you know, a few other concerns, uh, budgetary and so on. So, uh, through that process, I, I really took a look at Halifax. Um, after spending a little bit of time here, I decided to apply. Uh, once, you know, as this process has gone on further and further, I've spent more time here, I was just here, uh, over this past weekend. Um, so I have spent a lot more time in the area, uh, camping at Pine Wood, uh, just so that I'm close enough to be able to spend a little time here in town. Um, and, uh, I've always come from, I've come from a small town and, and lived in mainly small towns throughout my life, so, um, I do appreciate a small town such as Halifax. Uh, Norfolk being only, you know, 10,000 people, 10 to 12, very similar in size and scope. Um, so I, I like what I see when I come here. So, uh, so I've put my, my name in here, it's the only, it's the only place that, uh, I've applied to for that reason. Uh, you know, I believe to, to throw it out there for something you really believe in, and I think this is a great community and we'd like the opportunity.
Excellent, thank you.
Could I do a follow-up, though?
Go ahead.
In terms of, this, this will be your first time as a town administrator. Could you tell me what you think your biggest challenge would be in terms of learning curve to come up to that?
Um, not to get too off of that point, but I, I believe that every town has its challenges, and I think that I've found that society, not just in, in Halifax, but probably most towns within the Commonwealth, are feeling the pressure of, uh, excuse me, budgetary constraints. I think that, uh, you know, that, uh, two and a half isn't, isn't working very well in this day and age. Uh, you know, the economy has gotten a little out of skew. Uh, collective bargaining has been a big part of that. Um, so, you know, I have been through a, a few collective bargaining agreements through the Department of Public Works, so I do have experience with that as well. But I believe that that's probably will be my biggest challenge, not from an experience standpoint, but from adapting to what Halifax's situation is. I, I do know through my research and through the interview process I do know through my research and through the interview process that Halifax has five collective bargaining agreements that are coming up that need to be done within the next year. So that, just from a time constraint, will be, will be an issue that, that needs to be dealt with. And then if, when you compound that with any budgetary constraints, whether that's, you know, the consideration of an override or lack thereof, and, or budget cuts and how that, we'll all play with that, there's a lot to be done here in the next seven or eight months.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Let me ask, let me ask you, sort of, we want to start to get a sense of your style, but I want to, sort of feeds into that. If you could, tell me what you believe the role of the town administrator is within a town, and particularly given what you know about Halifax, what's the role of the town administrator?
Town administrator, in my opinion, first and foremost is to bring everybody together. No one person is going to do everything. You, it's, that's, that's just not how, having a military background from being in the air force years ago, that's a lesson that I learned early on. I think that you have to, you know, I would be new to the town, whereas a lot of these employees have been here for, in various roles for many, many years. So as the newcomer, I would get to know everybody, certainly the select board for sure, to get that interaction, to figure out what our biggest challenges are and, and to take some action. But I think first and foremost, you have to get to, you have to rally the troops, as it were. Get everybody together, find out what their styles are, what, what challenges they're having. Some of that may be budgetary or otherwise, but until you sit down and have those conversations, I, there's no way of knowing that.
Just, I don't know if we're going down different avenues right now, but, you know, I think, I think we can all agree, Blair, one of the big things that's going to hit Halifax next year are budget constraints. And like you say, almost every community in Massachusetts is feeling the crunch of the budget. Talk about, we have a $21 million budget. I don't know, how big of a budget are you comfortable working with, do you have experience with, and maybe share some, maybe some creative budgeting ideas that you've done to try to help your community of Norfolk tackle budget times?
Well, as I go back through the budget process, over the years, the, I've had, I've experienced times where the budget process was flat for employees, there were no increases. That's certainly not optimal, but, but during hard times, that's something that needs to be considered and certainly can't be taken off the table. When you go beyond that, you know, with the use of ARPA funds that happened, you know, through COVID and through that era, as it were, I'm not a fan of, of using, you know, one-time funds for repeating bills. I think that's an issue that, you know, really needs to be discussed. Sometimes it's inevitable and you have no choice but to do that. But, but those are the types of problems that I, that for all intents and purposes lead you down the path to where you get into a real crunch like you have, you know, most towns have now. Where, you know, ARPA sounded great at the time, you know, there were budget shortfalls, COVID was going on, and so ARPA was kind of just hanging out there, and a lot of towns, knowing that eventually that would come back to bite them, have gone down that road, and that's where we find ourselves. So those, that's a huge challenge, because that's, those, those types of opportunities aren't going to come back anytime soon. Most towns are above 50% with their budget going to schools.
Yeah, I think we're about 54 at last check.
Norfolk is 53. I think a lot of towns are in that, you know, 40 to 60 range, which, you know, and that's a concern, you know? Everybody wants the best education for their children, but at the end of the day, you know, the bills have to get paid and budgets have to be balanced. So a lot of hard decisions to make when it comes to budgeting. Norfolk's budget is, is just north of $50 million. So that's, and I've had an intricate involvement in that process for a number of years now, just because, not just with that, but I also have a $2.5 million water enterprise budget that I deal with and a wastewater budget enterprise that I deal with. So certainly used to both municipal and, and enterprise budgets.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Do you, in the enterprise, do you, how does, how does, every community is a little bit different on how that is carried out. Do you make recommendations to the, I believe in Norfolk, the board is the, the commissioners?
Yes.
As I recall, they, they open their meetings as both board and as a commissioner. Do you recommend the rates to them?
I do. So in my experience over the past three years, about every third year, I've had a rate study done, just so that there's more than just my opinion. I don't feel it needs to be done any more than that, any more frequently than that. But I've done that every three years and then taken a look and, and insert my own opinion into that. But I've had a consultant come in, we've taken a look at that. But I do recommend the rates every year. This past year, I had a flat water enterprise with no raise in rates, so I was able to keep that at a 0% budget increase this past year. And over the past six years, it's been no more than a couple of percent at any given time. So that has been, and we have done water projects and, and infrastructure additions, but that's, that has been one of the crown achievements of my, my tenure, because it's, you know, even, even my public works budgets have never been more than, than a couple of percentage points. Last year, I was at 0.1%, this year I was at 1.1%. So, so I have done well at, you know, shaving money off where possible, but Norfolk residents deserve, you know, they pay high taxes and they deserve services, and so there is a real balance there to work through. Certainly not simple or easy to do.
Do you have policies that guide the development of the enterprise fund budget? And how you?
So we do have a, like a water management plan that, that works through.
Go ahead.
Well, it works through infrastructure, kind of encompasses not just the, the rates and the management, but expansion, policy regards to health and safety, kind of an overall encompassing plan, as it were.
I guess I'm, I'm wondering if you have policies that guide your, you know, the required fund balance that you have?
So I try to keep, I try to keep no less than a full year. So, so with a $2.5 million budget, I try to keep at least $2.5 million in reserve.
You, that's your approach? Do you have, do you have policies, written policies that do that?
There is not a written policy for that.
Okay. Okay. And you have a consultant that comes in every three years and does a rate study for you?
Yes.
Do you yourself generate any type of, or someone in your organization, under your supervision, generate any type of planning, financial planning document?
Yes, we have, we have a five-year plan. To be honest with you, when COVID hit, a lot of that, you know, it's theoretically, it's a plan, you know, it's a living document as far as I'm concerned. I think that you have to make adjustments for obviously things like COVID or PFAS is another one. You know, we're lucky enough that, you know, our, our water sources, while they do have, PFAS, they're not enough to, to be over the four parts per trillion. So, so in that regard, we're doing pretty well. But, you know, a water source, which is obviously a resource that we can't live without, a new source is, you know, seven and a half to 10 years in the making by the time you go through permitting, you fund it, and actually get it put in the ground. So without at least a five-year plan, not just budgetary, but operationally, it's really difficult to have a handle on, especially with all the building that's going on. You have 40Bs everywhere and, you know, it's, without at least a five-year plan, you're really put in a tough spot.
Okay, that's the five-year plan and the use of water, the development of, you know, how much water is going to be used and the infrastructure needs to it, but I guess I'm one, and I think that's great, but I'm just wondering if it goes beyond that to consider the manpower costs and, you know, the costs get built into an enterprise fund, because everything gets put in.
Oh, yes.
If appropriately done, an enterprise should be capturing everything that's affiliated with that.
Yeah, that, that is all encompassing. That's, that's labor, that's my budget, five years out into the making. We just literally just put a well field online in the last three years. That was seven and a half years in the making prior to that. So that's up and running. So it really does evolve. A, a plan, I guess is as good a word as any, but it really is a living, breathing document that I, that I do play around with on a yearly basis. Like I, I think if you set something like that in stone, you're in trouble three, four, five years down the road.
Just, if you don't mind me jumping in there, so I don't know if you know, we don't, Halifax doesn't really have a functioning master plan as of right now. And I think our last town administrator, one of his goals was to do more forecasting and less reactionary. To your point, you know, things take time to put in, in motion. Do you feel forecasting is a strength for you? And if you were the town administrator of Halifax, how much would your vision be, not just in the day-to-day, but, but looking, try to forecast down the road?
I think that forecasting is more important than it's ever been, only because of the, the rapid changes that we've had in society. If you look on my resume, I started out in the Berkshires, a small town, smaller than Halifax, town of Cheshire, and I was on their master plan implementation committee. I was the chair of that board as the public works director. And that opened me up to not just the master plan, because a master plan is a massive document, but to actually take that master plan and to start to whittle it down to things that are feasible, that, whether it be economically or physically, things that really were important to the majority of people, to really take that document, and ours was hundreds of pages, and to, to look at it. But without forecasting, I think you're in, you're, you're doing yourself a disservice. Only because, you know, things, again, things that, that looked good, you know, two years in the future today, you know, the world is changing at such a rapid rate, not, not just even municipally, technologically, infrastructure, you know, across the board. People, people are changing faster than ever, so it's, I think you have to take all of that into account.
Sure. Thanks.
What are the areas that, this sort of crosses into a few different areas here, in terms of, you know, it is a, it's a challenging time financially for many communities, you need to find other ways of raising funds. There's a number of projects that every community has. And so, sort of pulling those two thoughts together, the idea is try to find other monies to pay for projects. Grants.
Grants, absolutely.
What's your experience in securing and managing grants?
Actually, I literally this morning got an email from Department of Ecological Restoration for receiving a grant for Norfolk for $146,000 for a bridge culvert that we're doing. That was, that's actually the second stab at the same grant. We had initially gotten that grant last year for a project, and knowing that it wasn't going to be enough to do that, I had looked at Chapter 90 funding to fill in if I didn't get the balance. But as of this morning, I got an email that I had received the balance of that, which was 146. So I am obviously open to grants. I, in this day and age, I don't think you can survive without them. You know, there's not just, not just infrastructure grants, but grants in general, whether they be technological, you know, for, for security upgrades, whatever that may be. But I think that, you know, we just, locally, towns don't have the money to be able to, to fund these on their own. And so without grants, I, I don't know how you accomplish it.
And not to, not to scare you here, Blair, but.
Famous last words.
Yeah, right. Full disclosure, you've done your homework in Halifax, you realize we are currently not in compliance with MBTA zoning.
Yes.
Which makes getting and receiving, you know, receiving those grants a challenge at this point. Any ideas? I mean, I, I mean, it is what it is at this point, but, you know, that said, any ideas or any experience where you're thinking out of the box to help with grant eligibility, if, if at all possible?
Well, I think, you know, and again, Halifax is, I'm, I'm not privy to a lot of the local piece of Halifax. A lot of times, I've seen where the private sector has been involved. And, you know, grants, having a door slammed on, on grant opportunities is certainly a challenge, for sure. But I wouldn't say that's the end-all, be-all either. I mean, I think that, you know, in this day and age, I think you keep your ear to the ground. You know, the private sector, you know, given the, the right opportunity, certainly have, you know, some avenues there to at least have conversations. But, but that is a challenge, without a doubt.
I agree.
Is there any, is there any movement, you know, is that?
We're, we're currently, well, we're currently in litigation with the state, so we're waiting on a, on a decision, and once that comes, we'll, we'll deal.
I have a neighboring town that did the same thing.
Yeah, so we're, we're.
Rent them was on the same.
Correct. So, yeah, we're on our own, we're not tied in with another community, so we'll see when that decision comes down, and we'll, we'll kind of deal with the chips when they fall.
Yeah, Norfolk, Norfolk passed the, the MBTA provision and, which I was actually surprised.
Yep. Yeah, we were, it was rejected pretty handily here in Halifax, just so, to give you.
711 to 7.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, it was the largest, largest populated meeting we've ever had in the history of town, so.
Single digits are barely the most.
Yeah, it was, it was, the statement was definitely made.
And, and a lot of towns, you know, there are certain topics in towns, and certainly Norfolk wasn't a town when it came to the MBTA issues, but we did have a migrant shelter. We have state prisons in town, one that was, that was mothballed. And three days before town meeting, the state said they were going to turn it into a migrant shelter, so you can imagine 72 hours before a major town, before a spring town meeting, finding out that news and the angst and emotion that went along with a decision like that. And, you know, we, we went through that piece of it.
Yeah.
And had to react quickly to, to, you know, the concerns of the public and everything that went with it is now no longer functioning. But, but that was, I would, you know, I hate to say the word assume, but I would assume that very similar emotion goes into something such as the MBTA.
It does.
Issue, so.
Yeah, it does. And you bring up town meeting, we have a spring town meeting as well. I would argue that that, getting that meeting ready is one of the biggest responsibilities a town administrator has. How comfortable are you with getting that meeting ready, and what experience do you have getting ready for, for town meetings?
So I, I have written warrant articles that have passed in the past to, to put forth to the town administrator, my town administrator, which is now the town administrator of Bridgewater. So I have been through that process. I haven't obviously been in the town administrators' shoes for that particular process, but as far as actually putting a warrant together, I, I don't see that that would be an issue. Obviously, the first time, you know, you physically go through the motions with anything, I think there's a little learning curve, but certainly nothing that I believe is insurmountable.
Great.
Okay. Moving into the area of sort of project management, you know, I, I think it's a DPW director, we can, we can almost just stipulate that you manage projects.
Absolutely.
Okay. But I want to talk to you about a, something one of your references mentioned. You know, when we, when we talked to, you heard me, before the, we started, your interview started, I was describing how we, we reach out and we try to find out, you know, the types of projects people have worked on, and we try to learn a little bit more about the people. And one of the, the issues that came up in talking to you on a reference, that they looked at it very positively, was that you had a situation in Norfolk where there was a procurement issue. Procurement problem.
Yes.
Can you walk us through that and what your response was to that?
Sure. So the procurement issue that I had was, we had procured services for a vendor, a contractor, to essentially on an annual basis, do $100,000 worth of combined work between water emergency repairs and general site work. Throughout the year, we had had a number of water main breaks and issues that pushed that number above and beyond, that, well beyond that cap. The state likes to try to keep that within about 25%, give or take. Throughout that process, that number went well beyond and above that with work that we had done. And so that kicked back, the AG came back to ask questions. That was part of the reason why I went through the MCPPO certification course, to do that and to learn from it. But there was, beyond them asking a lot of questions, there was never any fines or any, any sort of ramifications from that, other than, you know, for all intents and purposes, you know, the. you know, this is a learning curve here and to don't do it anymore. So that's where that ended up in the end, up and through last winter, so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the, the reference mentioned that was seen as that, that you took control of the situation.
Oh, absolutely.
Took responsibility and you went off and you did the MCPo. But suffice to say, because this is funny, this is an issue that was very important to the board when we, I think it was important when we, back when Cody was hired as well, but also here. It's a small operation.
Yes.
And so the town administrator really has one of the primary responsibilities is to be the chief procurement officer and to oversee and make sure that everything's being done according to it. But you do have the MCPo and you are well-versed in, in that.
Yeah, I was in the very first MCPo class last September and finished up, because there's three classes and they stagger them, finished on early January and I got my certification shortly thereafter.
Good.
So as fast as I could possibly do it, I think everyone was impressed with, you know, nailing all of that down in about two and a half months timeframe. But, yeah, it was, certainly, I would recommend that course for anybody.
Yeah, okay. Staying with the project management area, this we could have sort of combined project management and procurement, because one sort of feeds into the other. And project manager, again, it's a DPW director, you must field citizen requests on a regular basis.
Absolutely.
Okay. How do you make sure, what systems do you have in place to make sure that the, first off, do you, do you handle the citizen requests or does someone else?
Vast majority.
Okay.
Vast majority, so.
I'm sure in Cheshire, you did.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. So when a, when a citizen, there's a standard DBW email of a lot of this day and age, but we still do get a lot of calls. Those calls will all come to me personally. And then from there, if it needs someone to go out and take a look at it, obviously, I don't have the time to run out to everybody's residence, whether it's, could be, I have nine divisions that are underneath me. So it could be anything from a dirty water complaint, to stormwater, to a tree, to pothole, whatever mailbox, winter snow plowing, across the board. So it could be just about anything. Most of the time, depending, obviously depending on what it is, but a lot of times I will call that individual immediately to kind of get a better feel rather than just a message, respond to them. And 99% of the time, those are really, even when they're heated conversations, we, we have a good interaction, good communication. Sometimes that involves me being further involved and going out to somebody's home or to look at it in person. A lot of other times, it may be just as simple as a, as a water technician going out to take a look to find out why someone's water might be dirty or maybe they're hydrant flushing, whatever the case may be. So I do believe that that initial phone call is the, really the crux of the whole system, that initial call to call someone back to just, you know, we've heard your complaint, we're going to, we're trying to understand your complaint, we're going to address your complaint to the best avenue possible. Sometimes, you know, the complaint just isn't, but it's, you know, budgetary and can't happen, but at least have that dialogue with, with the resident. I find that nine times out of 10, if you have a 15, 20-minute conversation with somebody about why something isn't feasible, and that education happens, then they can, you know, look at it and say, oh, well, you know, I never really thought of it. I've had, I had an individual one time complain that we plow too much.
You won't get that here. I'm just going to let you know.
He was very, very, very upset with me. And I explained to him that, you know, the, the, half of the town is past your house, the trucks have to leave the DPW to drive by your house. And he thought, well, I went to Boston every day for 18 years, I didn't, I didn't realize that that happens. And now I'm looking out my window and I can see truck, 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 truck. And he was really, really upset and at the end, and ever since, we've been great friends. So, you know, those types of interactions, I feel really are necessary to, to dealing with most problems.
And then kind of pivot a little bit, Blair, that's dealing with the public. We don't have our own HR department here in Halifax. So kind of look at that from an employee side. How comfortable are you with HR protocols? Can you share with us maybe an HR, I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty or anything, but experience with HR procedures and how you handle that HR process?
So we've, we've had our HR challenges in Norfolk over the years. I've had three HR directors since I've been in Norfolk. So the DPW isn't in the same building as Town Hall, we're kind of our own entity and do most of our hiring on our own. I've gone through the screening process, the interview process, talking with the town administrator about where that person may or may not fall. Obviously, collective bargaining is a piece of that. I've had a couple of people that, over the years, have had to been let go from, from a, from a punitive perspective, I guess, is the best way to put that.
Yep.
I've dealt with grievances from the union, you know, overtime issues, that sort of thing. And all the collective bargaining agreements really do kind of nail it down a little bit different than than here. I did take a quick look at some of the collective bargaining agreements in Halifax to bring myself somewhat up to speed. They're a little outdated, but, but anyway. So I have been through that gamut and I do a lot of the HR in-house myself. I also review process. Of all the divisions, I have foremen for each of those divisions. I do my own reviews for my staff and the foreman. And then the foreman and I sit down for the employees underneath those foremen.
Okay.
Blair, what's the total number of people in your departments, under your foreman? How many people are we talking with? All you, you mentioned nine.
Through nine, through nine divisions, it fluctuates between 18 and 25.
Okay.
I do have a couple of open positions at the moment, probably like everybody does.
Yeah. And then to circle back to your role of town administrator, so sure, we're the board of selectmen and we help guide the town. We're not here all the time. You know, the, essentially, the town administrator steers the day-to-day operations as a town, you know, because as much as the three of us like to be as involved as we can be, our eyes and ears aren't here all day, every day, like the town administrator is. How would you describe your, your leadership style here in the town of Halifax, just interacting with, with the employees here in the town?
Well, I would go back to saying that, you know, initially, you know, the town administrator really is the conduit, right, between the, the elected board that govern the town and the people that, you know, the, the daytime people that make the town run. You're really that individual piece of that. Initially, I would like to, you know, meet with individual members of the board as much as possible to get a feel for what each of you, you know, where your concerns are, pitfalls that you may see in the future, those types of items, you know, on an individual basis and whether that was to happen once a week or more frequent or less frequent, however that plays out. But that would be one of my, my important initial electives to try to make that work. On the employee side of it, I would start with getting everybody together. I think I would really like to know collectively as a group, how long people have been here, what departments they're from. And then I would sit down and I'd like to meet with each of them. I'd like to know, you know, some history of their department, where they find, what their challenges are going forward. You know, are they having, you know, where, where was their budget last year? Where do they see their budget going this year? Are they having staffing issues that, that need to be addressed or they're concerned with? Those are all part of that really steep learning curve that, that not just myself, but I think any town administrator would have, you know, within the first 60 days of coming to a town. Once you get through that, do you have a fall town meeting?
We do not. We've, we've had specials every, every now and again, but the only one on the calendar every year is the spring.
So during the spring, you do capital items and everything?
Yep, soup to nuts. We try to do it all, hopefully in not too many evenings. We've been getting good, they've been getting shorter, which is great.
Absolutely. But so those are all pieces that go with that and, you know, looking forward, it is August. And I look at, you know, if I were to, you know, be the, be the person chosen for this role, that I look, you know, at the timing of it. There isn't a fall town meeting, so that's helpful. But when I go back to look at five collective bargaining agreements that need to get done, the learning curve that I would anticipate there to be realistically, and then on the, on top of the fact that if there ends up being an override discussion, which I don't think is a viable option, but obviously it needs to be discussed. You know, if your normal budget process started after Christmas in a normal year, I think that you're too late. If, if that's where you are budget-wise, you know, if you're not starting to really sit down and have those discussions at the, you know, middle of October, I think that, you know, you're in for a real ride. And I don't think that's the just way to do it. I think you really need to be upfront with it. I think there's a lot of education that's going to have to be out there, a lot of resident interactions, you know, and, and education seminars, whatever the case may be, with groups throughout the public, whether seniors, whatever, whatever those groups are, I'm not sure what they are here in Halifax, but you're going to have to have those conversations earlier than later. And I think if you wait till January, it's too late. So there's, there's a steep, steep curve here for the next 60 to 90 days for whoever ends up being the town administrator. But I think it's worth noting that I have a handle on, a realistic handle on what those challenges would be, given all of those factors, the fact that I would be new to town, collective bargaining and whatever the budgetary issues are going to be.
You'd be busy.
That's a wild ride for.
You'd be busy.
Anybody, not just, you know, not just me, but I think that's, that's, that's a tall order and somebody had better be willing to put some work in.
Agreed.
You know, I, my average for the past six years has been about 47 and a half hours, 48 hours a week, although I'm paid for 40. If I have one downfall, it's probably that I'm a bit of a workaholic.
That's, we're, we're okay with that. We won't hold that against you, but.
Well, yeah.
Very much, very much.
Anything, guys? Bernie got any?
Yeah, we've been hitting on a number of these, but I want to give the other boardrooms a chance, if there's anything we haven't hit that you want to.
We were right there, I guess I'll just jump in. We were right, you kind of were just talking about, talking about availability. I know you said you're not looking at any other positions for, for an open, open job, but it's probably, you know, on paper, it might be a Monday through Friday job. The fact is, it's probably not just Monday through Friday, it's maybe never off the clock, that sort of thing. Talk to us about your availability, availability Monday through Friday, what your schedule might look like, night meetings, can you attend night meetings without issue?
So I do not have any children. I am, I'm married and live in Foxborough. My job now is 24/7, 365.
Sure.
Right down to the fact that I actually, I, I don't ask anyone that works for me to do something I wouldn't be willing to do myself. I have a CDL driver's license, I have full hydraulics licenses and I go out and plow with them, just, just as they do. So first one in the building, last one out of the building. That's, that's kind of my leadership style, for better or worse, depending on who you're talking to, I guess. But I am available, my phone is always on, for better or worse. But, yeah, I'm available for whatever.
Night meetings as you select board, FinCom.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I was, I was going to say, that's one of the, one of the characteristics of the Halifax position and, you know, smaller towns in general, but certainly here in Halifax, is the town administrator is sort of the one who's at, you know, obviously at the board meetings, oftentimes it's the FinCom, Conservation, ZBA, whatever the case may be, there may be a question or an issue coming up that they need some guidance.
Yes. And I do a lot of that now, you know, with, with the different boards throughout town, planning board, you know, constantly, you know, discussing different items with them regarding rights of way and different infrastructure issues. The ZBA as well, especially, you know, in the 40B era, different provisions that they like to put in their decisions that impact, you know, roads that are already accepted and that sort of. So, yeah, I, at this point, I, I meet with the select board, not so much in the middle of the summer, but I would say at least once a month myself, whether it's, you know, water rate hearings, just seems like once a year I go in front of the board to explain how roundabouts work, you know, any, any variety of, of topics, but availability is no problem at all.
What do you, this is kind of higher level cheesy question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What do you see, Blair, as your biggest challenge if you're the town administrator of Halifax?
Short-term or long-term?
How about, how about both? We got time.
Absolutely. Short-term, I think, again, I would go back to the time issue, right? I think that Halifax really has, has those three core, you know, in the next 90 days, right? We're in the middle of August, so September, October, November, so 90 days theoretically between now and Thanksgiving. So between a, a new town administrator, getting, you have, you have five, five collective bargaining agreements, which is.
But once you get them all settled, you don't have to do them again for another three years.
That's true, it's just more of the time crunch, right? It's, it's getting those figured out, because you really, I think you do yourself an injustice by not dealing with those before you start to really try to figure out what your budget's going to look like.
Correct.
You know, for the next fiscal year. So that, so there is a timeline that I believe has to happen there. And I think in the short term, between now and Thanksgiving, it's a lot of candle burning and, and a lot of communication in order to try to put that together. No easy feat. But, but I think that's the initial challenge. And then after that, I think, you know, once you get past, you know, and I say long-term, but really less than a year, once you get past spring town, your annual town meeting next year, I think you really need to start to look at fiscal responsibility, where the town is, what the town's going to look like, a master plan. What fiscally, what's the town see itself being in five years? You know, is the town, you know, some discussions probably need to be had during that timeframe about, you know, does the town want to remain somewhat rural? Or, you know, where, what are the, what is the land development in town look like? You know, are there developers that are, that are chomping at the bit to get in here? And, you know, do we have, you know, good zoning regulations that, you know, maybe need to be updated to, to address some of those problems? I know, you know, from my experience in Norfolk, that, you know, it was a rural community wedged between Foxborough and Franklin. There aren't very many parcels of land left and, and the residents of Norfolk like their rural feel. And they feel as though the 40B issue has kind of rammed down their throat a lot. They weren't real happy about the MBTA law. And so every community has that feeling. And I think that that's a piece that needs to, to come out here and, and we need to deal with, because I, I don't see it going away.
I think I agree. Both, both the 40B and MBTA are hot button topics here in Halifax. And I will say, there's a decent population here in town that are, we'll call them very passionate about those, those issues.
Sure.
How are you with taking barbs? You know, socially, on the social media, you know, in public, as I say, there, I think their, their intentions are well, are all well and good, but, but sometimes the delivery is subtle as a bowling ball.
Absolutely.
So, so are you comfortable with, with, I guess, taking on that responsibility?
I take on a fair share of it now. You know, my, my budget isn't what I would like it to be, and so therefore, some roads don't always get paved and, you know, different infrastructures issue. So I do take a little bit of that now, as anybody would. But I really have found that engaging, doesn't always quell that, but I, I think it does go a long ways. I, I think if you have a core group of people in town, and I think every town has a dozen people that are just that group, I invite them to come talk to me, to sit down, to voice their opinion, to, or, or, you know, go have lunch. Like, like sit down and really talk it through. And we may not see eye to eye and we may not figure that out, but I think that does diffuse some of that. It'll never diffuse all of it. I mean, it's, you know, if you have a, if you have a thin skin, this is not the, this is not the career for you. But at the same time, you know, I think if you get up every day, you put in the time, you put in the effort and, and you can go to sleep at night with your, with your head high, what more can you ask for?
I agree.
Anything, guys?
So you come into a town, there's all different departments, all different personalities and people, what, what would you do to make it like a team effort to make sure everyone is pulling the wagon in the right direction to benefit the town of Halifax?
Well, I think that's, that's initially starts with that first meeting, right? They don't know me, I don't know them. You know, I've always loved the expression, you never have a second chance to make a first impression. And, and I think that starts right out of the gate. I think that initial meeting where you have a department head meeting, you pull everybody together and, you know, And, you know, there, there is a process there for them to, on both, on both sides, for them to get to know me and likewise for me to get to know them. But that sets the stage for, you know, I don't, I guess ground rules is probably the wrong, the wrong term for that, but, but to set the stage, expectations, you know, we're all here, we're all trying to, to work through the same thing. We're all trying to get to the same goal, you know, we are, we are here for public service. At the end of the day, through and through, that's, that's what it's about. If that isn't, you know, why you're here, then, then obviously we need to have that conversation. And I think every town has one or two of those throughout my career. There are a couple that just don't change very well with the times, I guess, might be the best way to put that. But, you know, we, you still have to cohabitate and work through it. So, hard to, hard to, you know, nail it down much more than that, but.
I think we've hit upon, you know, you've touched upon a number of aspects of, when you talked about the finance, financial issues facing the town and, you know, keeping people informed. So, it sort of talks, speaks to some of our issues with gathering citizen relations and government transparency. And I think the question you just had regarding how you bring people together sort of brings up the notion of collaboration. So, it leaves us with the, you know, usually the final question, if you will. You know, a lot of what we talked about, the nuts and bolts, obviously. We've also talked about relationships with departments and so on, and the public. But I'm interested in, you know, as a town administrator, you are the chief administrative officer working hand in hand for the Board of Selectmen, which is setting the direction of the policy of the town. How, what does that relationship look like to you? How do you, how do you navigate through that to make sure that they're properly informed and that you're all on the same page? What's, what's that, how would you like that relationship to work?
I think that how I would like it to work may not be how it actually works. And I think that, you know, there may be, you know, there are three members of the board. And I think that that may evolve over time. Initially, you know, being that there's a back and forth, I think I would like to really have some face time with, with each board member individually to get a sense. Again, I go back to, you know, the town administrator really is the conduit, right? Between, you know, three members having an open meeting and how that translates into a day-to-day managing of the town, across the town. And so, you know, as we sit here for an hour and, and discuss getting to know one another, it's a disservice to, to really not understand what each of you, I'm sure each of you brings a different viewpoint to the table. So, initially, that would start with, I would, you know, it would be great to have a couple of meetings, you know, right out of the gate, and then meet once a week at least, to just, even if it's for an hour. Could be by phone, by Zoom, you know, whether it's, how that is facilitated is probably irrelevant. But just have that face time to start to get that together. Again, especially with, you know, a sixty-day, you know, window here to really get up and running. I think that's really, really imperative out of the gate, because if I don't have that type of information, it hinders the direction in which you'd try to pull it all together. You, you are the steering body of the town, and so without having that back and forth, not, not impossible, but certainly more difficult without that. And, and that may, and, and as time goes on and as we get through the holidays, that, that may go down to, you know, once every two weeks a briefing. Maybe we do something different with the select board packet or whatever. However, that translates to that communication. I know in Norfolk, a lot of times the select board packet is done the Thursday before, you know, the selectman's meeting. With every document, everything you could possibly need, it's usually by Thursday afternoon. So, the select board has a chance to look at it over the weekend and then go through any questions there might be on Monday before Tuesday night's meeting. But maybe something like that works here, maybe it doesn't, maybe it's already happening, I have no idea, but.
Yeah, it is. It's pretty close to what we do.
But anyway, so I'm just kind of spitballing ideas and, and, you know, ways to, to, communication is the crux of it all at the end of the day.
So, I just wanted, you made it through twenty candidates, right? It's almost like Survivor. We're going through Survivor here. No, but your resume is impressive, so I guess we're, we're kind of getting close on time here. One final sales pitch. What, what do you bring to Halifax and why should, it's going to be a very difficult decision, no matter what it is. Why should, why should we go with you for town administrator, I guess, to rally?
I think you should choose me as a town administrator, because I have a wealth of knowledge across so many different departments, that, you know, I didn't just, you know, I'm not some kid out of college. I've been doing this my entire life, and, and it's not just, you know, I was an Air Force policeman. I've been an EMT. I've been, you know, obviously in Public Works. I have, you know, the, the financial piece of this under my belt. The, the HR and the people piece of it, negotiating piece of it. You know, I always, a director of Public Works really has to be a little bit of a lawyer, an accountant, an HR manager, an engineer, you know, across the board, a little bit of a, of public relations piece of that. So, I would, I would say that I think that you would be hard pressed to find somebody with a diverse background in this mine. I would never sit here and tell you that I'm an expert at everything. I think anybody that would tell you that couldn't be trusted very far. But I know where to look. I know a rock to turn over. When a question is asked, I may not have the answer in that moment. And I, I think that ideology has done me well over the years. I know where to go look and find it when I need it, and I'm willing to put in the time to go get it. And so, I would ask that you continue to consider my candidacy.
Excellent. Excellent. Any, any questions for us, Blair?
All I would say is thank you again. This is, I, I've looked at this entire experience as an opportunity, you know, which I certainly couldn't say for a lot of other candidates. But, but it has been an opportunity, and I really appreciate this, not just, not just the three of you, Bernie, the seven members of the, the committee that interviewed me for a long hour before, they were great. And the Finance Committee, everybody, I, I look forward to meeting everyone hopefully at some point. But thank you very much. If you have any questions, please.
No, just to give you the timeline, I think we will, we will look to make a decision, whatever that decision is, this evening. And then we'll, we'll let you, you know, whatever that decision is.
Awesome. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, no worries.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Take care.
Sure. We're going to, so just as one candidate leaves and another candidate comes in, we're going to take a quick five-minute bathroom break. It is seven thirteen. We will look to come back and, what's the word I'm looking for? Wow. Thank you very much, Bill Smith-Ewen. We'll reconvene around seven eighteen, five-minute bathroom break. Thank you, Bill. All right, it is seven eighteen, and I'd like to reconvene the Board of Selectmen Meeting for Halifax for Monday, August eighteenth. We are doing town administrator interviews, and I would like to welcome our next candidate here, Ms. Rana Monad. Help me with the pronunciation.
Dorfer.
Dorfer.
I got married and made things complicated.
That's okay.
Is this where I'm sitting?
Yeah, you're in the hot seat right there. Yes, welcome. Yeah, nice to meet you. And actually, would you like to shake hands before we start?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Nice to meet you. Thank you for coming in. And you're familiar with Bernie, I'm sure?
Yes. My favorite teacher slash consultant.
There you go.
I wear lots of hats.
He does.
Yes, Rana was a student in the past, back in spring.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right in Sharon.
Great.
All right. Okay, I, I think I explained to you very quickly before you came in, the process we're going to use is really sort of similar to the screening committee in terms of a facilitated conversation. So, I have a series of, the board has a number of topics we want to cover. I will ask a leading question for each one of those, and then we'll see where that goes. And the board may be jumping in as need be to dig down into your response to get more clarity or to pull more information out.
Absolutely.
All right. Let's start with the easy one first, sort of a, tell us why you're here. Not beyond the fact that you were invited. Tell us why you want to be the town administrator of Halifax and why you think you'd be successful in this role.
Thank you. That is a good question to start us off with. Well, I will say that my reason for applying is that I've been in the, I've been in public service for about seven years now. I absolutely love it. I fell in love with local government because of a pothole at the bottom of my driveway. For the longest time, I thought that it was my responsibility to fix that pothole. And so, every day coming back from work or from errands, I would have to drive up in a certain way so that my little Camry doesn't shake all over the place. And then one day, this ginormous F-350 showed up, and these two big burly men jumped out, and they cleaned up the hole, they filled it in, and they left. And my driveway was smooth and lovely again. And a few months later, I started my internship with the Needham Department of Public Works, and I, and I meet those two very same big burly men, and they were employees of the Highway Division of the Needham Public Works Department. And from there, my love for public service just grew. The amount of work that a town does in the background, things that you would not even know about, from changing the liners of the trash cans, from hanging up your, your holiday decorations, the, the quarterly billing, all of that work that goes into running a town and making sure that you are getting the best possible service for the town that you live in. It's, it all happens behind different little offices with people that have been there for five, ten, thirty years, and they all do a great job, and I love it. And I applied because I have a lot of passion for local service. I love living in Massachusetts. I'm very familiar with the cities and towns here, but just because of my work with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And I know that I want to serve the Commonwealth in a local capacity, and this is where I want to stay.
This would be your first, you know, in looking at your resume, you've, you've, you've really touched upon a number of different areas in terms of your, the work you did in Needham, and now you, the work that you're doing in Dedham, in your role as Assistant Finance Director and Director of Procurement. You sort of touch on a lot of different departments in that. Being a town administrator is different. What would you see as your biggest challenge of taking on the role of being the town administrator?
I think the biggest challenge for me professionally would be that I would go from not having that many direct reports to having a lot of direct reports. They probably, some of them have been here a very long time, some of them may not. They all have different personalities, different needs, and I will be yet another, not that I'm assuming, but I'll be yet another new town administrator coming in. And I'm, and establishing that rapport and establishing that relationship in order to get stuff done for the residents is going to be my biggest challenge, because I have to show them that I care, and that I'm here, and that I'm not going anywhere in the foreseeable future. Because I think a lot of people, when they see turnover, they get discouraged.
That's an interesting response, and I'd like to know how you would address that challenge then. How would you get to build those relationships?
When I was first hired by Dedham, my job was to build a department that doesn't exist, the Procurement Department. Procurement was decentralized. Everybody did their own thing to the, you know, to applicable extent with help from outside counsel. And so, when I came in, my job was to disturb all of these little kingdoms. And so, at, at the start, it wasn't easy. A lot of people didn't appreciate that I'm this young person coming in and asking them what they're doing and why they're doing it, and when they're keeping their documents and to show me that they're complying with Chapter Thirty-B. And I would imagine that here it would be much the same. I would be asking them questions. I would be disturbing their little nests, I'm calling them. And so, I built up my working relationship through a lot of trial and error, by showing people that I'm not trying to be a bottleneck, that I'm not trying to stop them from getting their work done, by building up rapport with them, whether it's having informal coffees or showing up to work events that, where everybody's gathered, you know, whether it's the cookout that the HR organizes, or going to the Pride Day that's organized by the town, or attending the local road race. All of these things are important, especially because Dedham has a surprising number of employees or also town residents. We don't see that in Needham, for example. That used to be the case a few years ago, not the case now. So, to them, that's really important, that they see you there participating. And I would imagine that it would be much the same here. They would want to see that participation. They want to have that one-on-ones. They want to have that connection.
What do you see sort of tied in with that? People have different descriptions or understandings of what a town administrator is, what a town administrator does. You know, as a former town manager, people that really were familiar with, you know, what a town administrator. They say, what is a town manager? So, I guess my question to you is, what do you see as the role of the town administrator in the town of Halifax?
Well, besides the official answer, as the town administrator is whatever's in the bylaw, there's also whatever the town administrator needs to be for the board. Serve at the pleasure of the board, and your will, your wishes as a combined board is what I'm here to help implement and guide and steer. And I think being a town administrator, specifically in this situation, I'm wearing a lot of different hats, and there are a lot of competing needs, and I have to be a little bit of everything for my different boards and committees that I serve. But ultimately, it's my job to keep my select board happy and to also help coordinate those other competing needs.
How do you see, how do you see that interaction with the board, I guess, number one, and with the town employees? Do you have a vision as to how you see that going with, with both groups? An idea of how you'd like to structure it?
How the board interacts directly with the town employees?
No, with the town administrator, with you. How would, how would you interact with this board here? Do you have a kind of a spitball idea as to how you could, how you would see that going? And then again, I guess, I guess talks about your leadership style as to how you would approach your relationship with the, the employees here in Halifax, town employees, so two-pronged question.
Okay, great question. So, I think as far as my relationship or interactions with the board, I guess we'll figure that over time, but I would imagine that besides our weekly meetings or bi-weekly meetings, whatever the frequency is, I'm sure that you probably stop by Town Hall frequently. There may be calls, there may be emails, there may be walks around town as I'm getting to know the town and stuff. And then, as far as the other aspect of it, are you asking me what my leadership style is?
Yeah, I guess, you know what, I guess that's how it boils down, yeah. I mean, are you, are you open door, or are you, you know, from the top? Or how do you, how do you foresee yourself interacting with the employees? What's your style of interaction with the employees here?
I definitely, at my core, I'm not a micromanager. I'm someone that always leads with the idea that I owe people the respect to let them handle themselves and their workload, and only interfere when issues arise or they need support. Obviously, that would adjust depending on the person that's in front of me. I've worked with enough people now that I can see if someone will need like a couple of touches throughout the week of like, hey, how's this thing going? How are you doing? Or that person is very independent, and I only really need to check in with them every, you know, couple of weeks. And so, I, I feel like I have a good idea of the person that is in front of me and what they need. And then, yeah, I'm very open door. Even now, I work with, you know, twenty different department heads because of my, because I'm a procurement officer, and I also handle grants, and I'm the Assistant Finance Director. So, I, I have people walking into my office every single day. I have emails coming in, calls coming in, people walking into my door, meetings off-site, on-site. And I just try to get them all in the order that they were received and try and get back to them as quickly as I can. And obviously, I have to prioritize, you know, if I have a request coming in from the town manager, it might not, you know, it might be higher up on the list than a request from my building commissioner or something, you know? So, just having.
Able to balance. Good.
The, I think we sort of touched upon how you build relationships. The, talk to us about your financial management experience. I mean, you're Assistant Finance Director, so you must be intimately involved with the budget. And what would you, how would you go about, what's your, what is your experience with the budget? Let's not just tell people that it is.
Get to the point, Bernie.
Tell, tell us what you, what your role is with the budget and your, your philosophy of budget. Tell us what your role is with the budget and your philosophy of budgeting.
I get it. Another great question. So currently, I am involved in the budget in the sense that I am monitoring our lines. I'm working with the town accountant to issue monthly reports. I am helping department heads make sure that they're getting the reimbursement requests in, whether it's for Chapter 90 or other grants that we've received. You know, monitoring central overtime, or monitoring our central purchasing issuing requisitions and making sure they're compliant with the law, of course. And then as far as the actual planning, I am part of the team that meets with department heads during capital season to look at their capital requests and help prioritize them in order to get that in front of FinCom and then town meeting. And then, of course, I'm part of the team that puts together the warrant book and helping sort of Fed warrant articles, putting together the various different documents that might be asked for by FinCom. Since it's been several seasons now with me working with them, we sort of know what kind of questions they might have. And I still work very intimately with FinCom, even when it's not capital or operating season. We're still in touch. They have minutes they need to vote on, they have questions. Currently have a deficit reduction plan going on with the Collins Center. We have a FinCom representative on there. And so part of my work is to provide the data as requested or researching other peer communities for benchmarking data that might be needed, such as their healthcare contributions or their work schedule, how long's their Town Hall open, if they offer certain benefits that we don't, their OPAB funding, all of these things. So got my hands in a little bit of everything.
Do you do any of the, with the deficit reduction project you're working on with Collins, is that, does that include financial forecasting type of activities?
Yes, we initially, so actually, the deficit reduction plan is phase two of the project. We started a couple of years ago, also with the Collins Center, through a community compact cabinet grant, where we were awarded about $13,000 to do a long-range financial forecast, which included looking at our five-year expenditures and revenues and looking at, sort of, looking at different ways of adjusting. And that also included collecting a ton of data. Again, the warrants, data from UNIS, our financial software system, all of that.
Bernie, real quick, so again, our town administrator that was here previous did a great job of kind of shifting the focus in Halifax to just putting out the fires of the now to a little more, as Bernie said, forecasting. We don't really have currently an active master plan. Do you think you'd be able to handle both your kind of day-to-day operational duties as well as have an idea of, you know, putting five-year plans together, putting that long-range stuff together as well?
Yes. My current workload is, I love it. I love being a little workhorse. It gives me a lot of pleasure to just get stuff done. So yes, the answer is yes. I'm very comfortable and familiar with grants. I don't have a problem writing them. I did sleuth on your website a little bit, so I did see your 2024, 2025 goals. And I think everything on that list is doable and accomplishable. I don't think that the town of Halifax has either applied for or received the Mass Works Grant in quite some time. That's a, that's a big, big helper. For example, just in FY '25, the town of Athel received $125,000 to update their master plan. If you guys don't have a master plan, that makes you even more competitive. Obviously, there's the MBTA Act compliance part, but that's easy-peasy. We'll get there eventually as a community. But I love applying for grants, they're very fun. I have really great relationships with all the different staff at the state level in the Office of Administration and Finance. So I am very comfortable with that. And your goals are all doable. There's tons of grants out there that we can get, whether it's to establish an HR manual, help do a comp in class, you know, get grants for best practices, whether it's DEI or retention or whatever the case may be, there's a lot of HR stuff out there. And the same thing for master plans, a comprehensive economic development plan. All of these things are doable.
Despite the MBTA non-compliance?
No. They're doable, once we cross that hurdle.
Yeah.
Together, we can do it. I believe in us.
Right. Yeah, it is a challenge here, given our MBTA status.
Yes. I mean, I get it, based on sort of the Googling that I've done, it seems that you guys just want to pass thoughtful zoning. And you obviously have a problem with sort of the overreach of the state, which is understandable, and a ton of other towns feel the same way. But it's not a bad thing to allow, you know, multifamily zoning. It's good. This is actually something that can directly contribute to that new growth that we're seeking. Young families are important in any community. That's why we build schools. That's why we invest in our infrastructure, to help bring in that new generation. So I, I think there is a path forward for us. But obviously, I think the state is just trying to twist as many arms as possible into compliance so they get it done, which makes sense. There is a demand at that top level to get housing out there, which is hard. But they're, you know, coming in 50 years after the Fed and trying to do it all at once.
We don't have an HR department, per se. How familiar are you with HR practices and protocols? And can you give an example of maybe an HR instance that popped up that you might have had your hands in? You don't have to get into specifics or anything, but I guess, as town administrator, that would be part of your duties as far as handling all the different departments. Where are you HR-wise?
So I wouldn't be able to like cite labor laws off the top of my head.
Few people can.
You know, I'm not that nerdy. But I've been involved in a few items, whether it's the having to let go of an employee, or put an employee on a PIP, or conversations with the union stewards regarding maybe they're upset that we hired an outside company to do work that they believe should be done in-house, things like that. Or it's handling communications with legal counsel about the paying out of a settlement for a labor dispute. So I do know that you don't have an HR department. Again, that's not something that I am worried about. Obviously, there are things to be mindful of, so that we don't get into trouble, so that we don't get into lawsuits, but just common sense. And again, coming in, reviewing our existing policies and structures and trying to secure grants to hopefully get in any best practices and an HR manual. And even if we don't get a grant, I have many good friends out there who are HR directors. I'd be able to steal their manuals, see what works for us. So it's not a big lift. It will be painful, because when you go from not having really a qualified HR to having a sort of a manual and policies that you can point at, is a little bit painful. That will be a transitional period, but it's doable.
Yeah, we do have, we do have HR on retainer, you know, as far as legal help. So you're not on an island there, but yeah, just wanted to check. And then one of the challenges, sorry Bernie, I'm not cutting you off.
No, no.
And it'll be a big challenge, is five of our six unions are going to need new contracts this year. How are you with negotiation experience? Have you sat in on contract negotiations? And do you think you'd be able to handle, again, it's a decent workload of five union contracts that need to be put together? So where are you with that?
So I've been on both sides of the union environment. I used to be a union co-steward when I worked for the Needham DPW. I have great respect for unions and everything that they stand for. And now I'm management, so I'm on the other side. Part of my job is to collect data for the collective bargaining. And we have nine bargaining units on the town side, and then we have a few more on the school side. So I've sat in on a few of those. I wasn't the lead negotiator, but again, I'm comfortable with it. I understand both sides. And again, we're all fighting for the same resources. So we have to present a unified front on what we're comfortable giving, what makes sense for us financially, while also balancing the fact that we need to keep our employees happy and retain them and make them feel appreciated and that their work is appreciated. And some people feel that with compensation, other people feel that with benefits. So there's always a good middle of the line to walk there.
When you were with, when you were sitting on the union side, were you negotiator? Were you the negotiator for that or one of the others?
Yes, with my co-steward.
Okay, okay. So you were at the table doing that, okay. In terms of your, you know, you've mentioned your procurement, you know, experience, setting up procurement for the town of Dedham. In terms of project management, like taking a project from start to finish, whether it be a capital project or you had that, maybe you can talk to us about the net metering credit project that you did with Dedham. How do you go about managing to make sure a project gets done to completion? I mean, that's one of the roles too of a town administrator, is to take on these projects and get them to the finish line. How do you go about doing that?
I think every project is different. If a project has an assigned architect or consultant to it, then there's sort of less management that you have to do. For the net metering credit project, really, it was sort of myself and the facilities director. There was a ton of nights spent reviewing contracts and going back and forth with town council, and their council running to the Registry of Deed to record stuff. And so I heavily rely on my calendar. If there's a task that I need to do, it's going on my calendar immediately. I use my calendar, little 10-minute blocks to just put reminders on there to remind myself. I also have a, I love OneNote. I don't know if you guys use Microsoft here, but OneNote, I love it. It's my favorite thing in the world. And I sort of keep tabs for every single project. And I have like a checklist of like project closing out. Like, have we done our punch-out list? Have we closed out the contract in UNIS? Have all of the pay recs have been paid? Did we receive prevailing wage? If it's a multi-year project, did we request new prevailing wage? When was, I also save our meetings in files that are for the project. And so each meeting will have an agenda, and then hopefully, if we're using Teams or something, we can use the AI function for our minutes internally. And then we can usually use Teams to send out a post-meeting recap, and it will usually recap the action items and stuff like that. And then I immediately put these action items in my calendar so I can follow up on them.
So you're very elaborate systems. I want to pick your brain at some point about my...
We didn't have a facilities director for a few months, so I was in the weeds.
Can I just jump in? So another big job of the town administrator is getting the town meeting ready. We only have one, we do one spring town meeting. Talk to me about how you would approach that daunting task, because it is a good-sized undertaking to do. What would your approach be? How much experience do you have prepping a town meeting? And kind of get into the nitty-gritty, how you'd approach it?
So again, a part of my current work is to help put together the warrant articles, send the book to the printers, get it back, make sure that the book has the addresses for what we have representative town meeting. So making sure the books has the correct addresses listed, sending that out, communicating with the precinct chairs to make sure that they've gotten their books and if they have any questions, or if we have any extra information that needs to be sent out to their precinct members. There's also, we have something called a mini-town meeting before town meeting, where people can come in and we can go through article by article, and people can have time to vet out their questions there, which is very helpful usually. So yep, very comfortable posting it, newspaper, website, constable, putting it together, sending it to the printer, closing out the warrant, setting the dates, all of that.
And we have some passionate folks here in Halifax on different issues that speak strongly to them. How are you okay with, you know, with the job, you're going to take your fair share of criticism? How are you with taking barbs, whether it be in public, social media? Basically, do you have the thick enough skin, you think, to take on those responsibilities?
Another good question. I won't lie, like I am a passionate person in the sense that like you will see my face if I'm like hurt or if I'm upset, you will see it on my face, but that does not mean that I will not be able to hold it in and deal with it internally when I'm somewhere else. I had the pleasure of reading a lovely book several years ago called The Four Agreements by Don Miguel Ruiz. And in it, there were two agreements that really stuck out to me. One was, don't take anything personally, and the other one is, always do your best. And I try to live by these two agreements specifically. I try not to take anything personally. The town administrator, town manager, whatever the case may be, is just an extension of the town. And when folks are not having a good time, they just want to take it out on somebody. So I know it's not about me, Rana, the person, it's they're upset at the town. And because I'm an extension of that, I serve at your pleasure. Obviously, there's going to be some mixed signals, and it's just my job to make them feel heard, to create space for them. And hopefully, we can build a relationship and clarify any misunderstandings or any misinformation. I don't like to use social media as a governmental entity to address things. That's not, I don't think it's appropriate. But I understand that social media is a great way for residents to gather and discuss their feelings and thoughts on matters and topics, which is fine. But we're not going to get down and dirty on Facebook and Instagram.
That's good. I agree with that.
As do I.
So how do we reach the people who are, you know, keyboard warriors? How do we inform them if we're not going to engage on social media, which I would generally agree with? How do we engage those otherwise?
So when I say engagement, I mean, we're not using the platform to respond in sort of like a back-and-forth. That's not what it's for. Utilizing social media to get the word out is important. Using it as a sort of pushing out information to your wider audience, always, always, always looping that content back to your website. Your website is your home base, that's where everything lives. I work with a fantastic director of communications. She's taught me a lot. And I really love the way that she approaches things. We have a similar culture in Dedham. Facebook is very big there as well. You're never going to reach 100% of your audience, and that's just something that we're going to have to live with. But you're going to have to figure out, who are your stakeholders? Who are the people in town that people listen to, who have influence? These are the people that you need to develop close relationships with, whether it's, again, having coffee with them, inviting them to things, asking them to join certain boards, or having them be involved in, oh, we're applying for this grant, what do you think? Or, oh, we heard you were really passionate about this thing, here's what we're thinking of doing. Involving those loud voices is important, and shunning them away often makes it worse. And I think it's in our nature, especially in Pirata, New England. If you're loud, people often dismiss you immediately. But I think that that is not a good approach, because loudness does not mean you're wrong or a bad person. It just means that you're really trying to get your message out there, but you're just not being heard. So providing the correct avenue to being heard and inviting them into the fold is extremely important, without being abusive, of course.
So you come into a town, there's all different departments, all different employees. What do you do to bring them all together? To, you know, pull the wagon in the same direction, because not everyone is going to be on the same page. So what is your plan to bring them into the fold, as you say?
Another great question. That depends. I will need some time to observe the existing culture. I can't just come in and make changes and force people to attend meetings that they don't care for. It's taken me some time in Dedham, but I have a quarterly meeting with all of the department heads that have capital projects going on. They need to talk to each other, fire chief, building, sorry, police, fire, building, planning, zoning, all of these big facilities, all these big departments that have capital projects where they're all interacting with each other, that's a quarterly meeting that needs to happen, a monthly department head meeting. Then we have sort of sub, not sub-meetings, but just sort of, we're having ongoing discussions and communications. So to bring people into the fold, again, I'm spending time getting to know them. I'm figuring out what's important to them. And ultimately, I think as a town administrator, you need to set the tone, because it's your job to lead, operationally at least. So I think working with your team to come up with a mission and a vision, where do you want to see yourself operationally as town employees? What do you guys want? Where do you see yourselves? Creating long-term strategic plans for where we want to be. You never want to create a plan... You never want to create a plan, whether it's a master plan or a open space recreation plan, or an economic development plan, and not have them talk to each other. These plans are not supposed to sit there on a shelf gathering dust. You spend tons of money, tons of hours making these plans. They need to talk to each other, they need to feed into the real-life actual work that these department heads are doing on the ground in order for us to reach where we want to be in five years, 10 years, 15 years, whatever the case may be. So it's a lot of work. A lot of it is long-range, a lot of it is long-term. It takes time.
Thank you. I want to go back to town meeting.
Yes.
Jonathan's question about the warrant, and you had mentioned, and you've mentioned the pre-town meeting. Who, who presented that pre-town meeting in Dedham? Is it the, is it the manager? Is it Leon or would people...
Actually, I think it's run by the town moderator.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. But the, the town manager, I mean, I've stood up at multiple town meetings.
That was going to be my question. I was, I was, I wanted to get a handle on whether you, whether that was an idea that you would like to bring to Halifax, because I don't know if they actually...
We're not a representative, no.
No, but even with a, a pre-town meeting of some sort. But I guess my other question is, one of your references did speak to your, you know, town meetings can get heated, but Rana has a way of listening to questions. So you do present a town meeting, you respond, or at least respond to issues that come up?
Yes. I've, I've had multiple town meetings where I had an article on that I had presented. One was passing a, the net metering agreement, because it's 30 years, so we need to get town meeting to approve that. Another one was to allow for the leasing of a portion of the school buildings that the panels are going on, because you have to get town meeting to approve that as well. So yes, we've had some heated town meetings where people got up and were very upset and thought that the panels were being made in labor camps overseas. So yes, very, very familiar with that. It's okay. My voice does, does get a little shaky when I'm in front of a large crowd, but I hold my own. I've learned. Any bigger than that, I am scared. Oh, no, just kidding.
Well, I'm going to steal Tom's question that he had before, and it's availability. As I'm sure you're aware, a town administrator, it's not really a nine-to-five job. It's more like a 24/7 job. Are you available for, say, you know, evening meetings? We have our, our FinCom meets at night sometimes. Our previous town administrator would try to make all those. There's, any sort of regulatory board might need some assistance from the, the town administrator. So basically, your availability to, to be available more than just the nine-to-five?
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's the job. I'm very comfortable and used to attending night meetings. Most of our meetings in Dedham happen after 5:00 PM. I'm often, again, FinCom, sometimes the select board if they need to accept grants, Sustainability Advisory Committee, Active Transportation Working Group, all of these different committees, they all meet at 7:00, 6:30. Sometimes the meetings go on for hours. We have two town meetings a year, and our town meetings usually don't wrap up until 11 or 12. So yes, and not to get too personal, I don't have children, I have a dog, so I'm around. I'm down.
All right. What have we missed? I feel like we've covered...
We've covered a lot.
A lot here.
Yeah, no, we've covered a lot. Let me double-check my list. And you are PPO, did you, are you certified?
I'm CPPO'd, yes.
CPPO'd?
Yes.
All right. Budget, town administration, budget. Yeah, no, we've, we've flown through.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we've hit all the stuff that I've had.
Yeah. Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, I guess sort of, obviously Cody took you through a specific period in, in Halifax's life, and now you're here. I guess I want to know what you're hoping for, for your next six months with your new town administrator. What does that look like for you?
Want me to go first?
Sure.
Sure. Not to, to mix any words, I think it's going to, the next year or so is going to be challenging, just with a couple of things that are coming down the pike. Like most communities in this area, we're, we're under an extreme budget crunch, where there's talk of possibly a two-and-a-half override. So I think the budget, first and foremost, is going to be a huge challenge. So anybody that comes in as a town administrator has to be really comfortable working a budget and trying to come up with something that might be a little bit out of the box. So I think budget comfort, I think, is a huge, huge plus. So there's that. The other thing are there are contracts, you know, we, part of that, we have five separate contracts that need to be nailed down. So when you add that to an already tight budget, it's, it's again, going to be a challenge. And then the third kind of arm of this beast is, it's going to be a challenge for grants as far as our MBTA compliance issue right now. So I think those are the three in the foreseeable future. There's always a balance here in Halifax. A lot of folks want to keep this place a nice, quiet country town. So there's always the struggle of how do you keep that identity, but still get some growth? You know, so there's that balance of smart growth, of, of increasing what we can do tax-wise, but not completely changing the face of the town. So, so those three, short-term, and then the vision of Halifax, I think, long-term. Those are kind of the big ones for me.
Yeah, I, just to piggyback quickly on two things there, we also have a regional school committee, we have the Halifax Elementary School Committee, and then the Regional School Committee, which is possibly having their own financial override being presented, possibly in conjunction with ours, so there's a couple of different things going on there. We also have a government study survey committee that is investigating the possibility of some changes, town charter, et cetera, you know, ups, downs, merges, that kind of thing. So that's going on. But the other big thing I would just say, the responsible growth in town, I think, is maybe number one. You know, some people want to stay exactly rural, that's hard to do, but I don't think anybody wants to go from zero to 60. So what that responsible growth looks like is a big challenge, I think. That's one of the biggest things facing, maybe not in the next six months, but in general.
Yeah, longer, longer term, I would agree. Bill, anything?
Yeah?
No. Yep. So just to let you know, I think we're, we're going to try to nail down our decision this evening, right?
Oh, dear.
So, yes. Well, we don't want anybody stewing and waiting by the phone. So I think the committee will, will, after you folks take off, will, will kind of work things through and we'll let, we'll let the candidates know one way or another what the decision is. So, thank you.
Thank you all very, very much. I'm really very happy that I got called back for a second interview, and even if we don't end up working together in the future, I wish you a lot of luck. And even with the MBTA thing, don't worry, there's stuff that can happen. And whoever you end up hiring, if it's not me, I, I have a lot of experience with grants, so have them reach out to me, I'm happy to offer them my little OneNote of grants, and private ones as well, that could help out. So I'm, I'm a resource.
Awesome. Well, we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
You too.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
All right, and we'll take another five-minute recess, bathroom break, give Bernie a chance to get our candidates out the door, and then we'll reconvene at, I remembered the word, reconvene, at 8:03 after a quick bathroom break. Thank you.
You've got the time down perfect.
All right, it is actually 8:08. I apologize for the delay. We are reopening the Halifax Board of Selectment Meeting for this evening. We had two great candidates. Bernie, any hints to us as to how you think this process should go from here after listening to our two interviewees?
What I always recommend is that you, you know, you go through the board and basically give your thoughts on each of the candidates and focusing really on, it's always a challenge because this is a public process. So you're focusing on what you liked about each one, and then sort of coming from that, and anything that you see as a deficiency, it's, it's put as, well, this is something that makes this one stronger, or, but it's not intended to be anything negative. And then, and then from that, see if there's a candidate that stands out to the majority of the board, and hopefully all of the board, and then act accordingly. And if it's, and let's see where that takes us.
Okay. All right. I'll go first, I guess, if that's okay, guys? I thought both candidates were very strong. Again, kudos to the, the subcommittee, the screening committee, for delivering two very solid candidates. But that said, I do think we had folks that had their pluses and minuses on both sides. I will say, do I think it's a completely perfect fit? No, but to Bernie's point, it's a tough, it's a very tough market right now for town administrators. So I think to, think that we're going to have somebody that just swoops in here and checks every single box that we need to check, I, I think that's unrealistic. I think even with our previous town administrator, you know, he didn't have all the experience that, you know, an ideal candidate might have, and, and he did well here too. So I guess if we're at the point now where we're saying which candidate we'd prefer, I think, I think right now I'm leaning towards Blair, just in that I liked how he was involved with many different departments. I like that he had some pretty good ideas as to how he wants to lead. He seemed pretty solid on the budget, $50 million budget over in Norfolk. He does have his CPPO, and talked about how maybe a little hiccup with that process turned now into a strength from a negative. I liked his delivery. And that kind of, again, two great candidates, but that's where my head is right now, leaning towards Blair.
I'd also like to thank the screening committee. I thought that they put two people in front of us, both worthy of our time this evening, and both worthy of consideration.
Absolutely.
Both had their strengths, different strengths. Not that I'm concerned about either of one specifically, I wish they, I wish they were a little bit more local, maybe. I don't know if we can, I probably can't delineate that too much, but the distance, I worry about burnout from all the hours and the time in the car and that sort of thing. I really liked Blair's diversity with people he's worked with. He manages different departments, department heads. But then I liked Rana's financial background. I think if we're looking for someone to get creative with the budget, I think she would be a candidate who can get creative with budget and think outside the box. He might be a bit more seasoned with time in government. I really could, I'm not usually a fence-sitter, I really could go either way in saying that I think both of them would bring something to the town. I'm, I might lean in one direction, but I'm not opposed to either. I think they both, like I said, the, I think the biggest thing in town right now is the financial picture. And to me, that would lead me in one direction. But in the other direction, I think Blair might have more of a seasoned tone with different departments and have more success with the collective bargaining and that sort of thing. So, I mean, I don't know, are we voting at the moment? Or do you have some thoughts?
Here are a few things. I too want to thank the committee, the aggregate candidates. I would lean more towards Rana because of her fiscal responsibilities and her knowledge where the town is facing a serious, serious problem. I just, I like her style, I like, you know, I think she'd be a good fit, but he's a good fit too, but Public Works is one thing, it's not everything, you know? I've dealt with Public Works directly before, they try to encamp us a lot, but I just think that it'd be a better fit for the town, we're in fiscal straits, to bring someone in who knows the ropes and can get us over that hill. It's a huge hill to climb.
How long was Cody here for?
Two and a half years.
Yeah, roughly two and a half, three years. See, that's also in the back of my mind, too. I, I think that, I know you can't put things on paper, what things will look like in three years, and what the performance will be, and what the appetite for, you know, another contract will be, but I, I think we would do well to think about stability at some point as well. I know you can't pigeonhole anybody into that sort of thing.
Yeah.
But I think there would be some benefit to having somebody who makes it through a contract and a subsequent contract, and I know there's certainly a bunch of variables in that.
Yep.
But I think that's something worth considering as well.
Yeah.
I mean, we've chosen as a, I don't want to speak for Bill or Jonathan or, you know, but we, we live in Halifax, we've chosen for this to be our spot. I'd like for someone to choose this to be their spot as well.
Right.
To lead us and work with us. Not someone who's going to, not that they would, but be here short-term and use as a stepping stone and move on.
Right.
So I'm looking, I would like to, you know, I know you can't really ask them the questions, but that was one of the things that was on my mind is...
Yeah, you can't, you can't ask the question, and we could have, but, but I'll tell you what their answer would be.
Right, I understand.
You know, but you, you nailed it. They, they will, you just have no way of predicting. I, I was in a, we did a search in another community a few years back, and the committee chose a person because they figured they would be there for the long haul, over someone that, you know, was sort of a, someone who was seen as being someone who would jump. They ended up jumping. The person that they hired ended up leaving, and then the other, the other person got another job somewhere else and stayed for a good period of time. So you just don't know how that's going to work. But it's a, it's a valid, I think you, Tom, it's a valid point. You, you would do well to have someone stay five or six years.
Right, two contracts worth, you know, just...
Exactly.
Yeah.
And not that you can, like, life happens quick, and it happens all for all of us, so I, there's no way of even, even if the best, you know, best-made plans were to be here, there's no way that you can tell.
And, and I think too, to what Bernie brought up at the beginning of this meeting, was that the, the role of the town administrator seems to be changing in the career trajectory. I mean, let's be honest, we had a guy here for 20-plus years, you know, as our first town administrator, and you thought he was going to finish here. So you're seeing more now, like you're saying, Bernie, that, that it turns over a lot more frequently now than they did in the years past.
Well, yes, that's sort of something everyone sees, not only in the municipal manager world, but beyond that, of people jumping. I think a big part of that, though, time will tell how long people will stay, because everyone's, this whole new group of the have jumped, they've now come in to replace all of that, the generation that left, we just don't know, they, they all just got in. We just don't know.
Right.
How long they're going to last. So, yeah, I, it's, that's, but it's, it's a valid point, that we should get a feel for that.
And I, and I'll bring up a little bit of the elephant in the room, you know, if you're going to like to hear this, but I've also had folks approach me and ask, well, if, if the candidates aren't, aren't good fits, then should you consider going out again? And, and to my take on that is, you, either way, the town of Halifax in some degree is going to be rolling the dice a little bit with whatever candidate we bring in, whether it's in this round here, and who's to say if we did decide to go back out again, what the pool would look like if we went back out again? It could be a shallower pool, could be a better pool, you don't know. So, so, you know, I think regardless of, of what our approach is, it's, it is a roll of the dice a little bit to see what, what shakes out.
Yeah.
So would we be ready to make any sort of vote, or would we, is there more deliberation to, to go about here?
Just another, I just want to stay on that, Tom's point, for a second. I think one of the aspects that you need to think about in order to have that happen, that someone stays a longer period, is to, assuming it's a, it's a good fit for the town and for them, that there be some process through subsequent contracts or subsequent follow-ups, that there be, you know, feedback, professional development, maybe compensation to some extent. Investing in them, yeah. So, and they could be part of, the, the interesting thing, Tom, that you also brought up is the, the charter discussion of the government study. It may be a case that someone who's here might be part of moving the position and the town organization to the next level. That means something.
Yeah.
So if we were to vote, just a procedural question, if we vote two to one, or three zero, or whatever the case may be, it's subject to...
Contract negotiations.
Contract negotiations, correct?
Correct.
And just, I think I know the answer to this, but they're aware, everyone is aware of the parameters that have been set forth previously by this group, the financial, everyone's on the same page with that, correct?
In terms of the compensation?
Yes.
Yes. I forget what, off the top of my head, what we had there, but...
Was it 160 plus or minus?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, so that's, it's not going to come as a huge surprise to anybody with that number.
It was advertised, right. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And again, it would be subject to, the, the way the process would work on this is that you would make your decision tonight, then... would make your decision tonight, then, in all likelihood, choose one person to be the negotiator on behalf of the board. The board would sit down and sort of lay out the parameters of what you want to put on the table for a contract, and I would probably recommend that you look at the contract that Cody had as a model, and then fill in the blanks of what you want to offer and put in that, and then present that, and then have some type of negotiation. Who's your counsel?
We have Kate Federoff handles...
Oh, right, with...
With Toleman.
Yep, with Jay.
Yeah, Ross and Durensis for legal.
Yeah, but our labor council is...
Is Jay.
Is Toleman.
Toleman, Jay Toleman, yep.
Yeah, but Durensis is our general.
So they would work with you on that, I know those people, so. So again, this is a tough one. Essentially, the three of us are essentially volunteers here, but the three of us care very deeply about the future of this town, and I think all three of us really understand the importance of this decision, and it's nothing that the three of us here take lightly. So that's why I think you're, you can feel it here at the desk, how we really want to get this right, and we really want to make a good decision. That said, are you guys ready to make a vote here, or what do you want to do? Entertain a motion to go with one of the finalists?
Yeah, don't get into the motion.
Yeah.
Just step aside.
Yep.
Subsequent contract negotiations.
I'll disagree here.
We'll agree. Do you want to, it's, all right, so I guess I'll go, you want to go first?
Well, just procedurally, so you're going to bring up a name, and if it's so moved, then second it, and that's how we do it?
Yeah, if it's a...
And if no one's with you, just we stay quiet.
Yeah, you stay quiet, and then we'll go with the other one after that. So I guess I'll go first. I'm going to move to offer a conditional appointment to Blair Crane as Halifax Town Administrator contingent upon successful contract negotiations and any further necessary background checks.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Give me a minute.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes three, zero. unanimous. All right, so there we go, we have our choice.
Okay.
Next option, next movements here, what do we do?
I will, one, I will contact the candidates and let them know.
Okay.
Let the two know. And then you, you don't have a, what else you have on your agenda tonight?
That's it.
That's it. So you should plan to meet an executive session at some point and lay out what you want to offer, and I probably have...
I think that's on our next meeting, we have it already listed on our agenda.
Okay. So we're meeting, we're meeting next week?
Okay.
Next Tuesday.
Okay. And you might want to have Kate attend to participate.
All right.
An executive session, and then lay out what you want to make as an offer.
Okay.
And then have, you know, you as chair, or Kate as your representative contact, just let me know which one is going to be the case.
All right.
I will not be, as you know, I will not be available.
Yep, which is fine.
But if you, I will have email availability, so if you need me to...
We'll get you a sat phone, you can...
Yeah, there you go.
We'll contact you.
That's right.
Come up with that.
Yeah. Anybody else feel like they just had a baby? Yeah, it's tough, it's tough, the weight of the moment, so here's hoping that we made a good choice. I want to thank again the Screening Committee for their time. Bernie, as always, a pleasure, you're the man, and thank you, guys, since no one else I'd rather go to battle with you, guys, I appreciate you. And with that said, I will entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.